Okay, Clerk, I think we're ready to go. Okay, thanks very much. We're going to start the public hearing then for October 1st. Hard to believe it's October 1st, but it is. We're going to start with a rezoning of 4696 West King Edward Avenue. And am I not reading my script here? I need the roll call first, please, Clerk.
Is in the chair, Counselor Carr, not in the chamber. Counselor DeGenova? Counselor Frye? Counselor Swanson? Counselor Howard is on a medical leave. Counselor Weave? Counselor Boyle? Counselor Dominado not in the chamber. Counsel Bligh? Counsel Curbeyon not in the chamber. You have quorum, Ms. Surge.
Thank you very much. And first, we acknowledge that we're on the unceded traditional territories of the Musqueam, Squamish, and Tsleil-Wautuths. And we thank them for having cared for these lands for time immemorial. And I think we're all enjoying working together as we push this great city forward. Also want to, of course, thank the staff who do so much to contribute to our city. And many are here today and spend long hours making sure it's the best place in the world to live, work, and play. So we have a procedural thing to go through first before we move on to the first rezoning. We had some procedural uncertainties which arose at previous meetings due to loss of quorum. And while council is required under Section 18.13 of the procedural bylaw to move a motion to go into committee of the whole, the public hearing is not required to sit as a committee of the whole during the hearing. Therefore, is the advice of the Clerk that the motion go into the committee of the whole be put to a vote and failed by council? So will somebody move a motion that I hope fails? There we go. Counselor Weave, seconds. Seconds. Great. Counselor Frye? All in favor? And that'd be nobody, I hope. All opposed. Okay. Looks like that's failed. Thank you very much. Okay, so before we begin, I have some announcements. In terms of speakers, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. It's important to remember five minutes have been erroneously reported by Carrie Gold in The Globe and Mail that we've changed this to three minutes, but that's not true at all. So you have a full five minutes, and questions will also be five minutes. Speakers may only speak once, and additional comments can always be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca, email publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The person or representative of the organizations must also be present, identified, and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene at a later meeting. And we'll announce that we're just working on that date now, so we'll announce that if that happens. So let's move on to the first rezoning of 4696 West King Edward Avenue.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 46-96 West King Edward Avenue from RS1 to RM 8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Thank you very much. And we have Amy McDonald here from the rezoning center, 2%. And it looks like you have a presentation for items 1A to D.
That's correct.
That's right. Now, we don't, just looking at the speakers list, we do have one speaker on 1D. If you feel like you could waive the explanation, you can do so, or you could move ahead if you like.
Staff are happy to waive the presentation. I would like to make one note about two minor corrections in the summary and recommendations found in your package for items 1C and 1B.
Okay.
The applicant's name was listed incorrectly. The records and documents have since all been updated, and so I just wanted to raise that for your information.
Okay. Is council okay with waiving the applications? I've seen a lot of these. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll just move on then. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application? This is for West King Edward Avenue applicant team here. Just put up your hand if you're, there we go, in the back. Did you wish to speak to this or just have questions if asked? Okay, great. Thank you very much. So any questions from council, the staff, or the applicant? And if so, just put your name on the list. And I don't see any questions. So we'll now hear from the public. We don't have anybody that's formally signed up to speak to this, but I will call three times. Would anybody like to speak to this rezoning application for 46 to 96 West King Edward Avenue, calling once? By law, I have to call three times, so I'll call a second time. This is the rezoning for 46 to 96 West King Edward Avenue. And third time, don't see any takers there. So seeing that there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hear closing comments. That's okay. Everybody looks all right with that? Okay. Any, does the applicant have any closing comments? No? Okay. Staff, closing comments? No closing comments. Does council have any questions for staff? I don't see any. So we're going to move to our decision on this application now. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Counselor Carr, thank you. Second. Counselor Frye, thank you very much. Any debate on this? I don't see anybody on the list, so we'll move to a vote. One, two, three, four, we're still good. Okay, and that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much, council. We'll move on to the second rezoning of 435 to 475 West 28th Avenue.
This is an application by Gateway Architecture to rezone 435-475 West 28th Avenue from RS1 to RM 8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Great, thanks very much. So we've waived the presentation on this one. Is the applicant here? Great, thanks. Would you like to present anything or just stay and answer questions? Answer questions? Okay, thank you. Any questions from council, the staff, or the applicant? Let's look at the list here. I don't see any questions. Okay, any, so there's nobody on the list that I can see to speak to this. So we'll move to calling from the audience. Is there anybody here present that would like to speak to this item? The rezoning of 435 to 475 West 28th Avenue. Going once. Going twice. Final call for speakers. I don't see any. Okay, thanks very much. So we're going to close the receipt of the list and ask, does the applicant have any closing comments? Nope. Okay, staff? Thank you. Questions from council? Don't see anybody? Okay, need a mover for this motion then? Can I look at this side of the room? Oh, okay. Counselor Carr? Counselor Boyle, thank you very much. Any debate on this? I don't see any. Okay, we'll have a vote then. And that's passed unanimously as well. Thanks very much. Moving on to the Oak Street application. Get the clerk to read it, please.
This is an application by Landmax Construction Limited to rezone 4239-4255, sorry, 7255 Oak Street from RS1 to RM 8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Great. Did you wish to say anything or just wait for questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council, the staff, or the applicant? I don't see anybody on the queue, so we're going to move to the public. And there's nobody signed up to speak, but I will call from the audience three times if anybody would like to speak to this application on 7239 to 7255 Oak Street. You'd like to speak? Could you come down? You have to come down and state your name, and, so come on down. Anybody else like to speak to this at all? Okay, just be a second while she comes downstairs. Please, right there. And so you have up to five minutes to speak, and if you could just state your name and whether you're in favor or opposed to the application.
Hey, yeah. Hi, my name is Diana. So I lived in the neighborhood for quite a long time. I'm not too favored to the plan because what I know about my neighborhood, 55 and Oak Street is a no-asset street, which means that you only can exit from the Oak Street mainly. And we know that across from our neighborhood, there's a church already, so quite lots of things going on. We noticed that. So if that area turns into townhouse, my main concern is about parking, and lots of people living in this neighborhood will be like blocked, so they only can exit from Oak Street, which is a downsizing landscape. The traffic over there is really fast, so I don't think people exit from there will be a good habit, might be causing lots of traffic jam or traffic accident. So in the neighborhood, most of us exit from the back lane of the redeveloped area. If construction going on, lots of big car will be blocking the way, so it will causing lots of traffic concern for us as well. So I'd like to know how you guys will be planning to do the parking spot?
Into the committee, the whole be put to a vote and failed by council. So will somebody move a motion that I hope fails? There we go, councillor Weave, seconds. Seconds. Great, councillor Frye. All in favor, and that'd be nobody, I hope. All opposed. Okay, looks like that's failed, thank you very much. Okay, so before we begin, I have some announcements. In terms of speakers, speakers have five minutes to make their comments and should limit their comments to the merits of the report being considered. Speakers should also state whether they are in support or opposed to the recommendations. It's important to remember five minutes have been erroneously reported by Kerry Gold and the Globe and Mail that we've changed this to three minutes, but that's not true at all. So you have a full five minutes and questions will also be five minutes. Speakers may only speak once, and additional comments can always be submitted in writing to publichearing@vancouver.ca, email publichearing@vancouver.ca. Those speaking on behalf of three or more persons or three or more organizations will have up to eight minutes to speak. The person or representative of the organizations must also be present, identified, and must not be speakers themselves. Finally, if council does not conclude hearing from all speakers this evening, we'll recess and reconvene at a later meeting. And we'll announce that, we're just working on that date now, so we'll announce that if that happens. So let's move on to the first rezoning of 46-96 West King Edward Avenue.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to rezone 46-96 West King Edward Avenue from RS1 to RM8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Thank you very much, and we have Amy McDonald here from the rezoning centre, 2%. And it looks like you're going to, you have a presentation for items 1A to D.
That's correct.
That's right. Now, we don't, just looking at the speakers list, we do have one speaker on 1D. If you feel like you could waive the explanation, you can do so, or you could move ahead if you like.
Staff are happy to waive the presentation. I would like to make one note about two minor corrections in the summary and recommendations found in your package for items 1C and 1B.
Okay.
The applicant's name was listed incorrectly. The records and documents have since all been updated, and so I just wanted to raise that for your information.
Okay, is council okay with waiving the applications? I've seen a lot of these. Okay, thank you very much. So we'll just move on then. Is the applicant team here to speak to the application? This is for West King Edward Avenue. Applicant team here, just put up your hand if you're... There we go, in the back. Did you wish to speak to this or just have questions if asked? Okay, great, thank you very much. So any questions from council to staff or the applicant? And if so, just put your name on the list. And I don't see any questions. So we'll now hear from the public. We don't have anybody that's formally signed up to speak to this, but I will call three times. Would anybody like to speak to this rezoning application for 46 to 96 West King Edward Avenue, calling once? By law, I have to call three times, so I'll call a second time. This is the rezoning for 46 to 96 West King Edward Avenue. And, third time, don't see any takers there. So seeing that there are no speakers, the speakers list is now closed. As few or no comments were received on this item after 5:00 PM today, I suggest we now close the receipt of public comments and move on to hear closing comments. That's okay? Everybody looks all right with that? Okay. Any, does the applicant have any closing comments? Nope, okay, staff, closing comments? No closing comments. Does counsel have any questions for staff? I don't see any. So we're going to move to our decision on this application now. Do we have a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Carr, thank you, second. Councillor Frye, thank you very much, any debate on this? I don't see anybody on the list, so we'll move to a vote. Two, three, four, we're still good. Okay, and that's passed unanimously, thank you very much, council. We'll move on to the second rezoning of 435 to 475 West 28th Avenue.
This is an application by Gateway Architecture to rezone 435-475 West 28th Avenue from RS1 to RM8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Great, thanks very much. So we've waived the presentation on this one. Is the applicant here? Great, thanks. Would you like to present anything or just stay and answer questions? Answer questions? Okay, thank you. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Just look at the list here. I don't see any questions. Okay, any, so there's nobody on the list that I can see to speak to this. So we'll move to calling from the audience. Is there anybody here present that would like to speak to this item, the rezoning of 435 to 475 West 28th Avenue? Going once. Going twice. Final call for speakers. I don't see any. Okay, thanks very much. So we're going to close the receipt of the list and ask, does the applicant have any closing comments? Nope. Okay, staff? Thank you. Questions from council? Don't see anybody? Okay, need a mover for this motion then? Can I look at this side of the room? Oh, okay, councillor Carr. Councillor Boyle, thank you very much. Any debate on this? I don't see any. Okay, we'll have a vote then. And that's passed unanimously as well, thanks very much. Moving on to the Oak Street application. Get the clerk to read it, please.
This is an application by Landmax Construction Limited to rezone 4239-7255 Oak Street from RS1 to RM8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, no correspondence has been received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list.
Thank you very much. Is the applicant here? Great. Did you wish to say anything or just wait for questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant? I don't see anybody on the queue, so we're going to move to the public. And there's nobody signed up to speak, but I will call from the audience three times if anybody would like to speak to this application on 7239 to 7255 Oak Street. You'd like to speak? Could you come down? You have to come down and state your name and, and, so come on down. Anybody else like to speak to this at all? Okay, just be a second while she comes downstairs. Please, right there. And so you have up to five minutes to speak, and if you could just state your name and whether you're in favor or opposed to the application.
Hey, yeah. Hi, my name is Diana. So I live in the neighbourhood for quite a long time. I'm not too favored to the plan because what I know about my neighbourhood, 55 and Oak Street is a no-asset street, which means that you only can exit from the Oak Street mainly. And we know that across from our neighbourhood, there's a church already, so quite lots of things going on. We noticed that. So if that area turns into townhouse, my main concern is about parking and lots of people living in this neighbourhood will be like blocked. So they only can exit from Oak Street, which is a down, down, sliding landscape. The traffic over there is really fast. So I don't think people exit from there will be not a good habit, might be causing lots of traffic jam or traffic accident. So in the neighbourhood, most of us exit from, from the back lane of the redeveloped area. If construction going on, lots of big car will be blocking the way. So it will causing lots of traffic concern for us as well. So my, I'd like to know how you guys will be planning to do the parking spot for that specific location and during the construction, how can you maintain our traffic in our street? Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. So, sorry, can I have your last name as well, please?
Yeah, Diana Chen.
Okay, thank you very much. So we don't answer your questions in this stage, but we, staff could reply to your concern afterwards. But thank you very much. I don't see any questions from councillors to you, so that's it for this evening. Thank you very much for coming in. Any other folks want to speak? Called my second time. Anyone else? Last time? Okay, thanks. So no more speakers, so we'll close the list. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Any closing comments from the applicant? No, you don't. Okay, thank you very much. Staff, any closing comments?
No closing comments.
Thank you very much. Council have any questions for staff? Councillor Carr?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I cut you off there by accident. Go right ahead.
Yeah, just thank you, would like to ask a question that arises out of the one speaker that we had, which is the impacts during construction and post-construction on, on traffic in the area, particularly in the lane and exiting from 55th on to Oak.
So as Amy had mentioned in her presentation, the specifics of the form of development for these specific rezonings is something that's reviewed at the development permit stage. In terms of generally speaking about traffic during construction and things like that, applications would have to apply for street use, and we would be making sure that there's not going to be disruption to traffic within the lane or along Oak Street, as that's an important arterial, of course. Access for the development, parking would need to be taken from the lane, so we wouldn't be loading those vehicles onto Oak Street. And we'd be reviewing those details at a greater level during the development permit process.
And what remediation would a neighbour have if they are finding during construction that the plan isn't working as well as they would like it to?
For sure. So if there are issues during the construction, we would encourage neighbours to call 311. They can reach out to someone and let them know that there's something that's not working for them, and then our inspectors can go out and see what's, what can be done to resolve those issues.
Okay, and in terms of parking, how much, how many parking spots are there incorporated into the project?
So for this schedule, the townhouses require about 0.8 parking spaces per unit.
Okay, and what does that turn out to be for the, for the development?
That would depend on exactly how large the units are and how many are able to be, to fit onto a lot this size. Those sorts of specifics are something that we'd look at at the development permit stage, so.
Okay, okay, thanks very much.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from council? I don't see any, so we can move to decision. Somebody move the motion? Councillor Carr? Councillor Weave, seconds. So any debate on this? I don't see any, so let's move to the vote. Just waiting for councillor Kirby on. Great, and that's passed unanimously, thank you very much. On to the last one of this package, which is 168, West 44th Avenue.
This is an application by Gradual Architecture Incorporated to rezone 168 West 44th Avenue from RS1 to RM8A to permit a townhouse development with an FSR up to 1.2. The form of development will be reviewed through a subsequent development permit process. As of 5:00 PM today, one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments.
Thank you very much. And waived the presentation, so is the applicant team here? Great, okay, thanks. Did you wish to address council or do you just stay for questions?
Just questions.
Just questions, okay, thank you very much. And any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Don't see anybody on the queue, okay. So now we'll hear from the public, and I don't think we have anybody signed up for this one. One, okay. Sorry, I just found my list here. I got it? Okay, I think I do. There we go, 1D, so we have Amen Mangat? Amen Mangat, no? Okay, so Mr Mangat hasn't shown up or is not here to speak, so I'll just have a general call then. Does anybody wish to speak to this rezoning application for 168 West 44th Avenue? Going twice. And three times. Great, okay, thank you. So there's no other public input, so I'll close the list now. And does the applicant have any closing comments on this at all? Thank you, staff have any closing comments? No closing comments. Council have any questions to staff? Looks pretty good, okay. So somebody move this recommendation? Councillor Carr? Councillor Boyle, seconds. Any debate on this? Don't see any, okay, so we'll have a vote. Waiting for councillor Weave and councillor Dominado. There we go, there we go. Okay, that's passed unanimously as well, thank you very much. Okay, now we're on to the text amendment for West 15th Avenue.
This is an application by Shape Architecture to amend CD1284 for the Vancouver Lawn Tennis and Badminton Club to permit an increase in the permitted FSR for permanent above-ground structures from 0.29 to 0.35 and the maximum building height from 12.4 metres to 14.7 metres. No change to land use or overall density is proposed with this application. As of 5:00 PM today, two pieces of correspondence in support were received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments.
Thanks very much. So we have Lex Dominik, okay, from the rezoning centre. Does anybody, would you want to waive the presentation? And I can ask council too if they'd like to, up to you though.
Staff are happy to waive the presentation.
Okay, is that okay with council? We're good, okay. Don't see any objections. So is the applicant team here? Great, did you want to address council or just stay for questions? Okay, thank you very much. Any questions from council to staff or the applicant? Don't see any questions, okay. So now we'll hear from the public, we don't have anybody on the list to speak, so I'll call three times. Does anybody want to speak about the, this application, this text amendment on West 15th? Going twice. And going three times, that's it. So no one's here, so we'll close the list now for public comment. Does the applicant have any closing comments? Thank you very much, staff? No closing comments. Council have any questions for staff? Nope, okay, thanks. We move to recommendation, please. Thank you, councillor Frye, councillor Boyle, seconds. Any debate on this? Oh, okay, and let's have a vote. Okay, that's passed unanimously too, thank you very much, council. Moving on to item number three, which is the rezoning of Van Ness Avenue.
This is an application by New Commons Development to rezone 3279-3297 Van Ness Avenue from CD1225 to a new CD1 district to permit the development of a six-storey residential building with 102 social housing units. A height of 22.42 metres and an FSR of 3.42 are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speakers list and receipt of public comments. Seven pieces of correspondence in support and one piece of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Okay, great, thank you very much. And we've got some speakers there, so thanks for coming in. Sorry, we're on Van Ness Avenue. Yeah, Derek Robinson, that's right, okay. Would you like to present to council or do you like to waive?
We're happy to waive if council prefers.
Okay, is council okay with waiving? Okay, great, thank you. Okay, so is the applicant team here to speak? Would you like to speak or just wait for questions? Sure, yeah, you're absolutely right.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Heather Oland, I'm a development manager with the Vancouver Affordable Housing Agency. The Van Ness Avenue project is one of 15 social housing projects that Vaha is currently delivering on city land with the, and this project is one of the seven that Vaha is currently facilitating with the Community Land Trust. We are very pleased to be working in partnership with the Community Land Trust and the portfolio of projects that we are delivering together will see the construction of approximately 1,000 homes between 2020 and 2023. This project that you are considering this evening represents 102 of those homes. I wanted to take the opportunity to introduce you to the project team that is in attendance this evening, Tiffany De Zeta and Darren Kitchen from the Community Land Trust, Nadia Hill from New Commons Development, along with architects from ZGF, Patrick Cotter and Andrew Thomas, Thompson, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity, and we will be available to answer any questions that you have. Tiffany would like to say just a few words.
Please do.
Good evening, mayor and council. So as Heather mentioned, I'm Tiffany De Zeta, and I'm the director of the Community Land Trust and represent the, the large team that Heather introduced that are sitting right to the left of me. But I think I can say with confidence on behalf of all of us that we can be not more pleased to reach this project milestone in the city approval process today, to deliver 102 affordable homes to Vancouver and in particular the Joyce Collingwood neighbourhood. Just a fun fact about this project and in relationship to the Community Land Trust and its partnership with Vancouver, this development, as Heather had mentioned, is one of seven Vaha sites that was awarded to the Community Land Trust as a portfolio in May of 2018. But it also is one of 14 sites that we have in partnership with the city of Vancouver, where we are, we're delivering almost 1,600 co-op and nonprofit homes across the city and social purpose community spaces as well, that are either currently occupied to date or under construction or in the development process, ranging in its affordability from shelter to low end of market. And Van Ness is going to be no exception with our commitment to deliver affordable homes. This city land investment with us and the Community Land Trust is allowing us to seek those partnerships with all three levels of government, so that we can pursue opportunities to deliver even deeper level of affordability that is truly geared to local incomes. And I think this also is important to say because the general public and often even people within the sector don't understand the difficulties and the challenges we face today to deliver true affordable housing. But I can honestly say with confidence that we see change happening at the city of Vancouver on all levels. It's not perfect all the time, but that change is moving us in the right direction, from everything from your investment in land to monetary investments and even the expedited approval process. I had doubts at the very beginning, but how the projects are moving forward with staff to get through the municipal process much quicker than before, I can say that it is working, and we're all working with that same mission to deliver housing for all. So I just want to thank the city and commend you for being leaders across the country for what you're doing for the community housing sector, and let's just do more of it.
Thanks very much for that. So, so this is the time if council has questions for staff or the applicant to ask, and I have councillor Swanson first on the queue.
Yeah, for the applicant. Am I supposed to say?
You don't have to stand, no, that's fine.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions here, if you want to come back to the mic. Thank you, thank you for working on this. The more non-market, the better. It says here that the rents are going to be one-third at Hills. Have you, have you got enough funding to put anything below that, or do you want anything below Hills?
Those are the partnerships that we're pursuing with both BC Housing and CMHC. So this city land investment has allowed us to move forward with applications with both senior levels of government. We can't particularly say what the commitment of that is yet, but we're working through that process to deepen that level of affordability, to provide a range from shelter to low end of market.
So that was going to be, my other question is, have the feds or the province given you any dough?
Well, we're, we're sitting with, moving through an approval process with BC Housing, and then we'll be then picking up the conversations with CMHC with the federal government after the election.
If the feds give you anything, would it be a loan or a grant? Do you have any idea?
It could be both. We're pursuing grant money, and then there could be a loan as well, depending on which is more advantageous for the project.
But can you go ahead with the project with, if you don't get anything from senior levels?
We're, we're confident in where we are today and what we're projecting that I'll be moving forward.
You're confident that you'll get money from senior levels or that you can move forward without it?
That we are confident that we're going to move forward with partnerships on all three levels of.
Okay. Okay, so much uncertainty, thank you.
It's just, sorry, it's hard for us to make announcements on behalf of the federal government, given the stage where I'm at.
I know, yeah.
Yeah, and BC Housing not being here today.
Yeah, okay, thanks for your work.
Thank you so much. On to councillor Weeb.
Yeah, mine was on how deep could the affordability get, because it's great to see this partnership. The front on the property, on the Skytrain side of it, is there going to be a pedestrian pathway as we continue to try to find ways to connect the neighbourhood? It's right, I know that there are lots of people that try to walk along the Skytrain as kind of a connection, I'm just wondering if there's an opportunity for us to do any...
Yeah, the land in front of the development is, is open land, it's BC Hydro land that translink overseas as well. So that land will be open, there is an existing pathway there, but we won't be adding a new pathway along there.
Okay, thank you. Thanks councillor Frye.
Yeah, thank you. Great look at project, really excited about the fact that it's 48% family. You know, I did a walk around with the local MLA, Minister Dix, and, and one of the concerns was, was around the rapid proliferation of, of units that didn't reflect a large demographic of that neighbourhood, namely the Filipino population who are larger family kind of units, so I'm happy to see that this is reflected. I'm wondering who the housing operator will be?
So the majority of the, the housing stock in the Community Land Trust portfolio is geared towards cooperative housing. So this is one of our sites that will be a brand-new housing co-op in the city of Vancouver that will go through what we refer to as an incubation process with the Cooperative Housing Federation of BC, which are the actual owners of the Community Land Trust. So it'll be a brand-new housing cooperative in Vancouver.
I would love to know that you're working with Collingwood Neighbourhood House and folks like that to ensure that there's a...
We are, yes.
Some of those families that are, okay.
Yeah.
That makes me even happier, thank you.
Thank you very much, and that's it for questions? Okay, so I'm going to, what am I doing now? I am going to hear from the public. So, we are number three, I think, right? Right, I don't have any, oh yes, I have Stuart Smith. Stuart Smith, and then Michelle Moran.
Hello, everyone, hello? One second. All right. Good evening, mayor, council, thanks for hearing me speak once again. I'll be quick, I think this is pretty easy here. 102 co-op homes, 102 non-market homes in a desperately low vacancy environment, I think is nothing but a win. Only 20 parking stalls is also a win, as we saw from the climate march last week. People want to see change on climate, and parking garages are fossil fuel infrastructure, so let's not have any more. And when we have parking problems, let's make sure we restrict cars and not housing. Aside from that, it's close to Skytrain, so what's not to like? Just a few other comments, I know there's a lot of co-op fans in Vancouver, and many of you campaigned on making co-ops a bigger part of our housing pie, so I hope we can spend some time considering land, and namely how much land in the city it's legal to put a co-op on. As far as I understand, you couldn't do this on most land in the city, so we should probably ask ourselves why it is that we have to have a hearing and invite all these people to talk about something that we all agree that we want. What enables a co-op to work is not some magical pixie dust of community, it's, what enables it to work is the same thing that makes all other affordable housing works, it's cheap land and allowable density. So we have those ingredients, they're all under your control, so let's have some more. Co-op housing, like all housing, delivers the most benefits to people who are in the buildings. For housing to benefit all, we need scale and speed. Every discretionary step, such as hearings like this one, is a hurdle that slows down delivery and ultimately keeps market rents high. If we want co-op housing to be part of Vancouver for all, for housing for all, our goal should be for co-ops to have a waiting list of less than two months in every single neighbourhood, and built at a scale and speed that puts fear in the hearts of private landowners. One building like this, every few months, every few years... One building like this every few months, every few years is not going to do that. So this is great, but scale and speed, let's make it possible for these folks to do one once a month if they want to. So to conclude, this building will form a significant long-term contribution to Vancouver's non-market housing stock, so we should say yes. And we should work to reduce the barriers such as this hearing to such housing in the future. That's it, thank you.
Thanks very much for coming in. You have a question, councillor Swanson?
Hi. That's a holdover actually, but I love the idea of one co-op every two months.
Why not? It's a holdover? Okay, sorry about that. Thanks. No other questions then? Thank you very much for coming in. And I have Michelle Morin. Great.
Hello. Great.
Do you have up to five minutes? Whenever you're ready.
Perfect. Hi, everyone. My name's Michelle Morin and I moved to Vancouver Kingsway last year with my husband. It was really hard for us to find a place that we felt like we could stay in for a decent amount of time, close to a good school, still close enough to the city center, walkable for me where I work in Mount Pleasant and Technology. And we were very fortunate to be able to find a townhome. That isn't the case for so many families in Vancouver. And this proposal will make it possible for people who are working and bring that vibrancy that attracted us to the neighborhood to stay. In Vancouver, we all know that housing prices are increasing and there's a limited number of supply for units that are oriented for families. And that's what this proposal brings. And we want to make sure that people working, families have the opportunity to lift themselves up and do have an opportunity to be in Vancouver and a part of this diverse and changing population. It's the diversity and dynamic community that makes it work and it is what made us so happy to call this new area our home. The increase as well in more people being able to afford to live here will bring vibrancy, more support of local small businesses and help, like I said, raise their families up and drive innovation in Vancouver's economy.
Great, thanks so much for coming in. No questions, so appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now I'm going to call from the audience. Does anybody else like to speak to this? Going twice. Anybody else want to speak to this application? Okay, so seeing that no one else is here to speak, we'll close the list. Anybody, does the applicant have any closing comments? Okay, thank you. Does staff have any closing comments? Nope. Counselor have any questions? Don't see any, okay. Oh. Councillor Fry.
Yeah, I just, if I could quickly ask staff, we heard from the applicant that the expedite and one of the speakers, that the expedited timeline really made a difference on this project. I'm wondering if you could just briefly explain how expedited was the timeline on this project relative to the norm?
Yes, thank you councillor. This application went through what we refer to as the short process, which is a prioritized process for projects that meet social housing. And our target is to process those through the rezoning phases within about half the time of an application, so approximately six months from the time that we receive a full application to the time that we come here to public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Okay, any other questions from council? Okay, thank you councillor Carrum, second or councillor councillor Dominado. Any debate? See anybody on the list, so let's call for a vote. And that's passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Okay, on to number four, the rezoning of 3429 to 3469 Fraser Street.
This is an application by Rise Alliance Properties Limited to rezone 3429 3469 Fraser Street from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 104 secured rental residential units. A height of 21.8 meters and an FSR of 3.43 are proposed. The following correspondence was received since referral to public hearing and prior to the close of the speaker's list and receipt of public comments. Thirteen pieces of correspondence in support and three pieces of correspondence dealing with other aspects of the application. This represents all correspondence received up to 5:00 PM today.
Thanks very much. And we have Robert White from the rezoning centre. Would you like to present on this or wave the.
Yeah, I'm happy to provide the presentation, knowing that we have some speakers, or I'm happy to wave at council's discretion.
Okay, let's go for it.
All right. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Robert White, rezoning planner for this application, which proposes to rezone a site at 3429 to 3469 Fraser Street under the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy known as Rental 100. I'll note a memorandum included in the agenda package describes a change to Appendix B related to the Housing Agreement Condition of Enactment for which no additional action is necessary. The site is located on the west side of Fraser Street, north of East 19th Avenue, shown here at the center of the map in a black dotted outline. It is currently zoned C2 commercial and it's located within the local shopping area along Fraser Street between Kingsway and 20th Avenue. West of the site, blocks are zoned RS1 and consist of single-family homes. Glad Tidings Church, CD1, is located east across Fraser Street with single-family homes and commercial zones along Kingsway beyond. The site area is approximately 2,400 square meters with a frontage of about 64 meters along Fraser Street and about 37 meters along 19th Avenue. There's a slight slope down from Fraser Street towards the lane of approximately 0.6 meters. This image shows the site from above looking west, is comprised of two lots currently developed with one two-story commercial building and surface parking. There are no residential tenants on site. A third lot on this block just north of the site was recently developed under existing zoning with a four-story mixed-use building. This application, shown here in red, is one of a number of current and recent rezoning applications in the Fraser and Kingsway area. The blue icons indicate rezoning applications currently under review and the green icons indicate recently approved rezoning applications. These rezoning applications represent a range of secured rental and social housing developments. Consideration of this application is enabled by the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy. The intent of the policy is to encourage new market rental housing in support of goals set out in the Housing Vancouver Strategy to approve 20,000 new secured rental units by 2027. Sites in C2 zones can generally be considered for height and density increases of up to six stories under this policy. As well, the Riley Park-South Camby Community Vision sets broad directions for the future of Riley Park and South Camby. Approved directions applicable to this site include strengthening important shopping areas and providing additional housing near the Fraser Street shopping area. This application meets the criteria and intent of Rental 100 and it's consistent with approved directions in the Riley Park-South Camby Community Vision. The application proposes to rezone the site from C2 to CD1 to permit the development of a six-story mixed-use building with 104 market rental residential units and commercial space at grade. Thirty-eight percent of the units are two and three bedrooms, surpassing the family-room housing mixed policy requirement of 35%. A height of 21.8 meters and a density of 3.43 FSR are proposed. The proposed ground floor commercial space along Fraser Street wraps the corner onto East 19th Avenue, where the prominent residential lobby marks the separation between commercial and residential before the building steps down towards the lane. The ground floor commercial height and the slight slope towards the lane provides an opportunity for two-story ground-oriented townhouse units fronting the lane to improve that transition to the single-family homes to the west. These west-facing two-story townhouse units will include landscaping along the lane to further animate and improve the experience of walking or moving in the lane. Two open houses have been held with the public. An applicant hosted open house at the pre-application stage in 2018 and the city hosted open house this past spring following the application submission. In addition, the application drawings and details were made available online along with a form to easily submit feedback. In response to the city's process, we received a total of 28 comments. Of these 28 pieces of feedback, comments were mixed, including support for the building height and density, how the design fits with the local context, and the proposed new secured rental units. Comments of concern related to the affordability of those rental units, the building height and density, parking and traffic impacts, potential loss of existing commercial tenants, and the desire for a community plan and more neighborhood amenities. In response to the affordability concerns, this application proposes 104 new secured market rental units on a site with no current residential units, requiring no residential tenant displacement. All units would be secured through a housing agreement for the longer of the life of the building, or 60 years. Housing Vancouver set 10-year targets for new housing types in 10 years across the housing continuum and income spectrum, which included a goal for 20,000 new purpose-built market rental units. As of June 2019, at around 25% of the way to 10 years, we've achieved approximately 11% of the total 10-year target for approvals of new purpose-built market rental housing. Regarding the building design, the urban design panel supported the project on April 27, appreciating the simplicity of the building, the choice of materials, and how well the stepped form responds to adjacent buildings. Staff have determined this to be an appropriate design response to the neighborhood context and have included conditions in Appendix B to further refine the building. In response to parking and traffic concerns, this application proposes slightly more parking than required, making efficient use of their excavation. As well, the site is within a five-minute walk of two frequent transit routes, including a number eight bus stop immediately adjacent to the site on Fraser Street. The application proposes to replace the existing commercial space with seven commercial units, targeting local restaurant and retail opportunities, and maintaining a fine-grained narrow storefronts of approximately 20 feet, along with a restaurant space and a larger commercial unit. And these are comparable to the existing widths of units on site. Lastly, in response to the need for a community plan and limited amenities, this map shows some of the amenities within a 10-minute walking radius. These include six parks, six childcare facilities, four schools, and active neighborhood commercial areas. Specifically McCauley Park and Robson Park, labeled in green at the top of the map, are located within about a five-minute walk north of the site. And David Livingston Elementary and Sir Charles Tupper Secondary in pink to the south at the bottom of the screen are located within a 10-minute walk. And the Vancouver School Board forecasts capacity for new students in the future. Lastly, the applicant is not seeking the development cost levy waiver and so will provide a DCL payment of approximately $2 million to go towards additional facilities, including parks, childcare, and social and nonprofit housing. In summary, staff support this application to rezone 3429 to 3469 Fraser Street from C2 to CD1, subject to the conditions outlined in Appendix B of the report, as it meets the intent of the Secured Market Rental Housing Policy. If approved, the application would contribute 104 new secured market rental units, including family-oriented units, towards the city's goals identified in the Housing Vancouver Strategy. Thank you. Staff and the applicant team are available to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. And is the applicant team here? Right, did you wish to speak or, yeah, okay, great. Just to remind councillors that when you ask, this is a time after the presentation, ask councillors the applicant, otherwise it's your only chance, so listen up.
Thanks. So Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Lucas Barabee. I'm a Senior Development Manager at Rise Alliance Properties and I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak on behalf of the applicant team this evening. This is the first purpose-built rental building we're proposing in the city of Vancouver. We have another building, Kingsway and St. Albert, currently in the letter of inquiry pre-rezoning phase and aspirations as a company to do many, many more rental buildings, both in the city of Vancouver and throughout the lower mainland. The building massing presented today is a product of many months of work with planning staff and resulted in unanimous support at the urban design panel in April. The C2 envelope establishes the step back towards the west along Fraser Street and we've taken care to emphasize a four-story street wall to help transition to the buildings on either side. The height of the commercial level along Fraser Street and the slight grade change from Fraser to the lane has enabled us to propose five two-level townhouses along the lane. And so this provides twofold benefits, both activating the laneway and providing much-needed ground-oriented family housing along the lane without adding overall height to the building. As Robert already said, we're not seeking the development cost levy waiver for this proposed development and so we'll be paying between $2 and $2.5 million in DCLs, of course, depending on how the rates escalate, which will be used to fund facilities including parks, childcare, social and nonprofit housing, and engineering infrastructure. With regard to the retail component of this project, as a company, we understand the importance of local independent retail to both the current community and future inhabitants of this building. Retail that serves as an amenity to the building is a core tenement of our rental development philosophy and we have intentionally designed the commercial units as spaces that will be attracted to smaller local serving groups. We've also consulted with the local retail community to understand both the types of spaces and lease structures that could ultimately help them inhabit the building. Thanks very much for your time and consideration of this proposal.
Great, thanks very much. And I do have some councillors that'd like to ask questions, so councillor Webb, you're first up.
Yeah, have you done consultation with the current business tenants to see if anyone would like to come back into the new building?
We've been in touch with current business. We haven't, at this point, established whether or not they'd like to come back, but we've been in touch with them throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. Thanks councillor Fry.
Yeah, thank you. My only quibble here would be the excess of parking from what the recommended amount of parking would be and it seems, and we're all sort of trending towards less parking, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's a fair question. So the reason for the over-provision of parking is because the material that we have to excavate and so it's peat material. So this is, if you look at the Vancouver peat bog map, this is located in that area. And as a result of that unsuitable material, we have to do certain, forgive me if I'm being slightly pedantic explaining this, you already know, but just bear with me. But what we have to do is called an over-excavation. So we end up having to excavate soil beneath what would be the lowest level of our parcade. And because we have to excavate and then backfill that material, it's actually fairly cost-effective for us to build an additional level of parcade because we're going down that far anyway.
Makes a lot of sense, okay. I wonder, is it possible to repurpose that if you find you don't need that parking?
Certainly it's something that we'll consider. I mean, we've had internal discussions thinking that perhaps we're over-parked, but like I say, the sort of base plan right now is to provide that as parking and look at options in the future.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Thanks very much, councillor Swanson.
Yeah, so the businesses, how many businesses are there now?
There's currently five businesses there now.
Do you know if their rents now will be lower than what they'll be after the building is built?
I'm not really able to speak to that. We, you know, ultimately, we're looking at occupying the building three years from now and it's somewhat challenging to predict what those rents are going to be at that time.
So how would it be concerned about business and residential gentrification? What are the residential rents going to be?
So the residential rents, they will be market rents. Ultimately, it's a market rental building. You know, I'll provide numbers because I know that's sort of what you're leaning towards, but I just want to caution that, again, we're looking at occupancy in 2022 and so it's quite challenging to predict what the rents are going to be at that time. But we would anticipate them being in alignment with average CMHC rates for Vancouver East Side. And so that would be around $1,600 for a studio, approximately $1,800 for a one-bedroom, $2,500 for a two-bedroom, and around $3,000 to $3,200 for a three-bedroom. So with that, using CMHC's metric of housing affordability, which I know you're familiar with, but equating to 30% or less of before-tax household income, that would mean that a studio would be affordable to someone earning in the $60,000 range and a two-bedroom would be affordable for a couple with a combined income of around $100,000.
So what would it take to get you to put some one-beds in there that would be affordable to people earning under 50K?
To be honest with you councillor Swanson, it would take significantly lower construction costs, which unfortunately does not seem to be the current trend.
So there's no way of cudgelling you or cajoling you into doing that?
I would say without the control of those hard costs or without significant upper-level government subsidies, unfortunately, that's not. unfortunately, that's not what we're looking at right now.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, over here.
Yeah, I didn't see the last one I spoke to, sorry.
No worries, thanks for being here. A couple of quick questions. Following up on the parking question around, I think the phrase "over-parking" was used. But I just wanted to clarify. It does indicate here that the parking would be for residential, retail, and restaurant. So I'm wondering how much of that is anticipated to be used for the commercial purposes versus residential? Because restaurants typically obviously have more people coming and going.
Yeah, certainly. So the parking ratios, we've allotted 4,000 square feet of the overall 13,000 square feet of commercial area for restaurant space. And so that 4,000 square feet will be parked according to parking bylaw for a restaurant use. And the remaining 8,000 square feet will be parked according to commercial standards and then the residual parking for residential.
Okay, so proportionally, numbers like line of magnitude, like you don't have to sort of specifics?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, sorry, I'm not sure of the exact ratio. At the top of my head, I could grab a statistics.
Okay, but takeaway, though, that a portion of that is not residential?
Yeah, certainly. So it's all, I mean, it's all parking to bylaw standards. So commercial will have its own allotted parking, which includes the restaurant ratios as well.
Okay, and separate from, like delineated and separated from?
Yeah, correct. So it'll be gated between the residential and the commercial.
Okay, my next question, and you're obviously entitled to answer or not, but just relates to the question around the DCLs indicated that you'd be paying. And I realise this isn't coming in under a specific Rental 100 or other project, but we often hear a lot that it's really challenging on rental to be able to pay the DCLs, and yet you are. And so I'm wondering if you have any comments on that? Because that's something that council grapples with quite a bit.
Yeah, I can speak to that. I think in, you know, in some areas of the city, depending on where you're located in east or west Vancouver, it makes sense to take the waiver. In this case, we didn't feel like it made sense. And the primary reason for that is because frankly, we would be locking in rents today, and we're looking at occupying three years out. So in an environment where we are not able to control costs, it's challenging for us to control revenue at this stage.
That's really helpful, appreciate that, thank you.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions anymore for staff or the applicant. Okay, I don't see any, thanks very much. So now we're going to hear from the public. And we have nine speakers on the list. We have Karim Windsor. Thanks for coming. So clerks will raise the podium for you, and up to five minutes.
Sure, good evening. Thanks for listening to me. I support this project. I live at 826 East 23rd, which is about five blocks away. I know Fraser really well. I think it's kind of on the low part of Fraser, so it's a good spot to have a six-story building. I think Rise is a really good developer. I actually, fact that I can remember the developments, the Independent and the Rolston, they actually build quite nice developments in the city. And I think it would be good for the neighbourhood to have Rise building in the neighbourhood. We need more rental housing. I think we need all forms of housing and having more rental and seniors and social housing. We need it all, so I support that we're building more rental instead of condos. I have two kids. They both go, they're both in the catchment. I think Rise is on the west side of the street, but I think they'll still fit into the Dickens Annex, which is where my son goes, he's in kindergarten. And both kindergarten classes only have 15 kids. So we're actually under, I think you should have 20 in kindergarten. So I think there's capacity in the schools. And I think going forward, it would be nice to keep more families in the neighbourhood so that the schools remain open. So I think having more rental housing, I don't think there's, I think there's room in the schools for more kids, and I think it's good to have more, to keep them there. Because I live like close to King Edward and Fraser, I notice on King Edward, they're building single-family on King Edward. And it kind of bothers me because I think we should be building rental along the arterials. So my thought is, I know we're doing the new city plan, but I think we should try to do more, we should try to protect, we should try to prevent more single-family on the arterials and promote more six-story rental. And I think then we'll have a lot more supply going forward. And then the same, they're building on, behind the lane on Fraser, behind Ernest Ice Cream. And again, it's a big 50 by 120-foot lot, and I could see them building five townhouses instead of another single-family home. So I think we need to support more density in the neighbourhood, especially on streets like Fraser and King Edward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and there's no questions? So we'll move on to the next speaker, Scott Mitchell.
Mayor and council, my name is Scott Mitchell, and I'm a Vancouver business owner and resident. I live in the 10-minute walk from this project, and my two kids go to Sir Charles Tupper Secondary. And I'm in favour of the form of development. I like the design, and I feel six stories is totally reasonable and sustainable because it's still within the wood construction side of things. I think, like the previous speaker, that it is particularly important that we have all forms of rental housing. And this is secured market. I think that's positive. It's important for more rental housing of all sorts, but particularly that that will attract new and talented people in the neighbourhood.
Great, thanks very much for coming in. I don't see any questions for you. So move on to the next speaker, Craig Stangheta. Hope I got that right. Stangheta. Okay, Stangheta.
It's the toughest part of the job, you know. I can imagine. Mr. Mayor, members of council, thanks very much for the opportunity to speak this evening in support of this rezoning application by Rise. My name is Craig Stangheta. I'm an owner of a commercial design firm called St. Marie. My studio is best known for our independent restaurant design work. We've designed some of the city's more well-known restaurants, including Meat and Bread, Valbe, Queso Tanto, Homer Street Cafe, and Ask for Luigi. I likewise own and operate a small café and neighbourhood grocery named Latana, and the small restaurant next door named Pepino's and the old Nick's Spaghetti House. That location's on Commercial Drive. Our restaurant team also owns and operates Austria Savio Volpe, near the proposed development. Our site being, of course, 615 Kingsway, next to Robson Park and the intersection of Kingsway and Fraser. Over the past five years, when we took over our lease at Kingsway and Fraser, we've been happy to be part of a busy, vibrant, and locally engaging neighbourhood. We've watched many independent businesses grow and thrive around us, stretching all the way up Fraser Street to Fraser and 19th and beyond. The group of businesses that I've seen take root in the neighbourhood over the past five years have all added to the sense that Kingsway and Fraser, and Fraser Street at large, is a new destination in the city. One with a unique character, a character unlike any other in the city, with a true independent spirit. You won't find many chain-staking a claim up there. Most of the businesses that have arrived have been ones that serve their community and add a true character and fabric, and help add depth, variety, and inclusion in a neighbourhood that services families, young couples, and long-time residences that have called this area home for many, many years. These are the people that form the mosaic of patrons that we serve at Savio Volpe. And we truly feel that there is a level of honest, organic, and unique urban growth in this area that warrants insightful and sensitive new development. About a year and a half ago, Rise reached out to a host a few sessions with some independent local businesses, and I was included in the group. Soon thereafter, Rise brought our studio on board to help them understand the potential barriers to independent businesses launching and operating in Vancouver. This approach to improving ground-floor retail and the idea that these spaces, when done properly, can and should act as amenity to the neighbourhoods in which they operate is why I'd like to advocate in favour of this project. Of course, as a local business owner, I'm enthusiastic about adding density into the neighbourhood in which I operate. But more importantly, I'm excited by the addition of businesses with which we share common values, ones which I believe will continue to foster both a tight sense of community but also continue to position Fraser Street as a worthy destination for all of Vancouver. Rise has taken an active approach to design space that would be attractive to local businesses and understands the importance of local retail and restaurants to neighbourhood fabric. Those ideas are reflected through small CRUs that would be attractive to local groups as opposed to larger format retail. And they've been considerate of many of the other barriers of entry that young entrepreneurs face when creating upstart businesses in Vancouver. As a local business owner, I don't see new developments offering modern commercial space as a threat to old businesses, but as an opportunity for new ones. Rather, I look at the thoughtful development that takes a human-scale approach as another opportunity for Vancouver's unique neighbourhoods to join the ranks of some of the more interesting, vibrant global cities, helping to be truly local, livable, and by extension, sustainable. I've been happy to see Rise take a sensitive leadership approach in this effort, and I'm keen to see this project reach completion and become part of our growing neighbourhood. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council, for your attention this evening.
Thank you very much. You have a question from councillor Frye.
Thank you, well-appreciated local restaurateur. Did you bring snacks to share?
I came straight from the office, unfortunately.
No, like you, I'm very impressed by the process that the developers undertook to sort of engage in it. And that's reflected in some of the comments by the developer talking about more granular, smaller retail spaces, independent, that kind of vibe. I'm wondering if there's other stuff that you picked up out of that process? And if you see there's room to expand that kind of process, I'd love to see a more thoughtful approach coming from other developers. And how do we, this sounds like an interesting process that was...
Yeah, fair question. I mean, to be truthful, we're engaged with them on another property. And we've sort of touched with them casually on this specifically because of its relationship to my business. And we've sort of done, been able to do a deeper dive on how to articulate another rental property in terms of the site context, sensitivity to the neighbourhood, historical context, and then also sort of help figure out how to, you know, sort of position that project at large, and then sort of foster an overall narrative that will help sort of bring like-minded businesses to populate the ground floor. And it's the, sort of the tip of the iceberg for this process. I think they're certainly on the bleeding edge in terms of the developers that we work with. And I would say we're working with the lion's share of them these days, and predominantly working with them because we've just been advocating for this level of integration, insight, sensitivity to how hard it is to start independent businesses. And, yeah, I think that we're only just getting started. I think there's a massive discourse that's warranted through all sort of levels of municipal government and in the private sector. And a little bit of connectivity between the gaps in that process would serve our city very well.
So without diving too deep into, I'm sure it was super thoughtful and immersive, are there any quick wins that you could just sort of throw out there that you think that we should be thinking about when other projects come forward and when we're moving forward with urban design and retail store furnishings that foster independent local business?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's not a one-size-fits-all. I think that there needs to be, I mean, for instance, what we try to encourage the developers to see is that the independent businesses are, you know, leasehold process is foreign to them, construction budgeting is foreign to them. The sequencing of when they'll be able to, you know, sort of receive their permits, how to shape like a tenant improvement allowance. And I think what we try to encourage them to do is truly be empathetic and try to sit on the other side of the sort of desk, so to speak, and see it from that perspective and try to sort of create some, just some simplicity to it all. And, I mean, frankly, it was, sort of learned a lot of this ad hoc by helping other restaurants through this process. But when I went to open Savio Volpe, I found that our landlord at the time, Mosaic, was really engaged. And frankly, they helped support us through the process. And I think that's, something as simple as that is critical.
Good stuff, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. You got a question from councillor Kirby Young, too?
Hi.
Hi.
I'll keep it simple. So what I hear you saying is, because I was also really intrigued, and I don't want to repeat, but about the supporting locally-serving businesses? Because I think those I carry to the neighbourhood. So we could assume that this is a building that you would want to locate in?
Yeah, I mean, I think so. Again, I think that every business is, there's so many factors. I think what we see is there's a lot of independent businesses that have a kind of familiarity with the neighbourhood and want to sort of stay there, participate there. And, you know, there's just something about, I hesitate to use the word "brand alignment", but a neighbourhood can have a sensibility. And it was exactly one of the things that we were searching for when we put Savio there.
It's okay, I'm a marketer, so I get, again, I appreciate the term, and I also appreciate you being here, and also appreciate the restaurants that you mentioned because I've been to everyone except one. So I appreciate brand alignment, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks very much. And that's it for questions. We've got David Hutniak. Thanks for coming in, and up to five minutes.
Good evening, your worship and council. My name is David Hutniak. I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Landlord BC. I'm here tonight on behalf of our 3,300 members to offer our support for this secure purpose-built rental project, which will provide 104 new homes for our community. I've spoken to you before about the many consequences and impacts of an inadequate rental supply and persistently low vacancy rates. In the context of this application before you, I would like to take this opportunity to reiterate some of them. Household information will be delayed as young people are unable to find suitable rental accommodation. Job-creating investment is put at risk when companies consider the adequacy of housing stock and making locational decisions and find limited choices in aging rental stock. There is increasingly limited ability to house new immigrants, a major component of our labor force, as the bulk of newcomers seek rental housing. Opportunities for compact urban development are lost as rental development, which typically promotes intensification by occurring in more built-up areas close to and thus supporting public transit, pardon me, is foregone. Competition for existing affordable rental units intensifies, giving tenants at the lowest end of the income spectrum little choice or no choice. Homelessness and the result in pressure on shelters and other social services will increase. All levels of government must take ownership of the inadequate rental supply problem by recognizing that you have the ability to improve the investment climate so that actual rental development is viable and robust. Rental development targeting middle and above-middle-income renters is not some flawed strategy. The reality is that it adds to the overall rental stock, putting downward pressure on rents and freeing up more affordable units as higher-income tenants move into the new supply. With a functioning market for rental development, the cost of developing strategies to directly address rental affordability become less prohibitive for the community and government. I would like to quote directly from a September 25, 2019 economic paper from the Royal Bank of Canada focusing on Canada's rental housing market. The paragraph I'm sharing with you verbatim reads as follows: "The right level of rental supply is crucial to stabilize rent. Historically, across Canada's top 14 markets, a rental vacancy rate of slightly more than 3% has been accompanied, on average, by zero real rent increases. That is, nominal rent rising at the rate of inflation. The heat on rent intensifies significantly the closer the vacancy rate gets to 1% and even more so when the rate falls below 1%. Notably, the rent generally declines when the vacancy rate climbs above 3%. So housing policy that ultimately raises a market's vacancy rate to say something closer to 4% has a good chance of generating meaningful rent relief. In fact, we believe that it would be far more effective policy than rent control, which only helps existing tenants and discourages new supply. Your worship and council, it is your challenge and opportunity to ensure that the existing investment environment promotes a sustained and healthy rental development market so that we can increase vacancy rates and improve the cost of rental housing in our community. That is why you should approve this project." Thank you.
Thanks very much. You have a question from councillor Kirby Young.
Hi, Mr. Huttonyak.
How are you?
Good. How are you?
Excellent.
Thanks for being here. I know you love spending your evenings here, but we appreciate it.
This is important stuff.
It is, which is a great segue to my question. In this particular application, it notes the 10-year target of 20,000 units, and I think staff had indicated that we were 11% of the way there, but about a quarter of the way through the timeframe. I'm wondering, with respect to that, if you feel that this is meaningful progress towards that number of units? Or how much further would we have to go towards getting to a healthy vacancy rate as you described in your comments?
You know, I don't know the precise number to see what it's going to take to get to a 4% vacancy rate, but what we hear is, you know, 8,900 to 9,000 units in metro is probably a number that is going to help the broader region. My own personal feeling is that's a low number. I think it's a much higher number. And I say that because, you know, we have new technologies coming here, we have multiple companies bringing in more and more employees. Your own staff report that 76% of all new residents are renters. You know, I think we need to be really ambitious here if we're going to address not just the current shortage, but the growth that we're seeing in the community. So it's a big number.
Okay. So you're saying every rental project counts? Is that what I'm hearing you saying?
Sure, absolutely. I mean, that sounds cliche, but I believe that very much, so thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for being here.
Great. Thanks very much. No other questions. Onto Brandon Murray.
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Brandon Murray, and I'm a development manager for Strand Development, and I support this project. Strand currently has three purpose-built rental projects under construction totaling 251 units, with another three in pre-construction surpassing an additional 400 purpose-built rental units. I support this project for a number of reasons. I want to start briefly by referencing an article in the Globe and Mail last week that is relevant to this project. The title was "Death of the Shopping Mall: Future in Mixed-Use Rental Housing." I wanted to mention this article because it offers an interesting perspective on the trends and shifts happening around us that we should consider preparing our city for in the future. In short, the article is about how consumer demands have changed with online shopping, how people are driving less to get their goods, how we are building fewer new roads than ever before, and how more and more and more people are moving into cities for work and services. These demand trends come in the shadow of us building very little new rental housing over the last 40 to 50 years because of the lack of rental incentives. In July 2019, the city published its report titled "The Review of Vancouver's Rental Incentive Programs." A few of these stats have been mentioned already. The report stated that the city's goal of delivering 20,000 new purpose-built market rental homes over 10 years is currently falling short of over 1,000 units per year based off the last two years. On average, based off the last 10 years, we're falling short by 57% every single year. 2019 is even worse than the previous two years, with only 537 units greenlit so far. Only seven or so rental projects have come to council since April, so this trajectory does not seem to be changing yet. Furthermore, last week on September 25, RBC published a report titled "Big City Rental Blues: A Look at Canada's Rental Housing Deficit." This article was just referenced before me. The report stated that Vancouver is in an optimistic position compared to other Canadian cities in closing our rental supply gap, but that our rental gap is still huge. It also said that rental housing is most likely fit to household budgets, and that it plays a critical role in addressing affordability. Now, from the perspective of housing options, in the immediate area of this project, on MLS, there is currently a four-day-old listing for a new two-bedroom apartment across the street on 18th. It's 855 square feet. It's equal in specification, or probably even lower than what will be built in this project. The asking price is $700,000. To purchase this today, you'll need a $140,000 down payment, and then you'll be paying $3,100 per month, including property tax and strata fees. Compare this to renting, no down payment required. Using the CMHC averages $2,500 per month. The result is you save $600 per month. You will have to earn $9,000 more per year before tax and save $140,000 in cash before you can afford to buy the equal unit right across the street. This confirms a report by RBC that rental fits household budgets better than condos. We already knew this. I've referenced these articles in the city review of rental incentives report because available information today tells us that demand for rental is only poised to grow more rapidly, and that we have an uphill battle to create enough supply to meet demand. Concerning the project's design, I think the architect and applicant have done an excellent job, and in particular, I appreciate how they have landscaped the laneway and added ground-oriented townhomes. This will significantly improve the current condition of the lane adjacent to the RS1 homes to the west. Because we've seen so few of these new purpose-built rental buildings completed to date, many people don't realize that they are equivalent to or even nicer than many brand-new condo units. These projects through the green building rezoning policy are incredibly efficient, comfortable, sustainable, and something that I think we can all be proud of, supporting given climate change. Thank you.
Great. Thanks very much. And I don't see anybody on list for questions, but I really appreciate you coming in. Thank you. Okay. Stuart Smith. He's here earlier. There he is. And then followed by Michelle Moran. Right there. Okay.
Hello, everyone, once again. I'm mayor and council. I'm Stuart Smith with Abundant Housing, speaking in support. I will be quick again. 104 secured rental homes in a sub-1% vacancy rate environment? It's kind of a no-brainer. Rental apartments, of course, are not for everyone and all housing situations and all ages and life situations, but neither are single-family homes, or co-ops, or SROs, or laneway homes. We need all forms of housing for all forms of people so that Vancouver can be Vancouver for all. The people who move into these homes will free up vacancies in existing stock. My 100-year-old secured rental building is for sale. And a building like this will drain 104 households out of the pool of potential tenants that my new landlord might wish to replace me with. So for that alone, I'm quite excited about projects like this. I'd like to say a quick thanks to councillor Frye for noticing the excess parking. This is the one time in my life that I'm willing to say that excess parking is okay. One other comment councillor Kirby Young mentioned in our conversation with David Huttonyak about every rental project counting and about what sort of targets they might have. If I might modestly suggest that target should be that each neighborhood should be required to expand their housing stock enough to at least house their own children, and most of Vancouver's arist neighborhoods have not done that for decades. So that'd be a good target. A few positives. Security tenor, obviously, the alternative in this neighborhood is unsecure precarious life below ground in basements. I did a quick search out in the lobby there. $2,000 basement suite, $4,200 character house, $1,800 basement suite, and a $1,300 micro suite in a detached house. So in that context, seems pretty reasonable, close to transit, and that's about it. I think it's great. Let's go for it.
Thank you very much. And on to Michelle Moran.
Hello again, mayor and council. So I talked a little bit about why I moved to the neighborhood last year, and now hearing some of the other speakers, I'm going to kind of change what I was going to talk about. But I'm just thinking back to when I first started working and I rented my first apartment in Vancouver, how hard it was, how hard it was to find a place, and that hasn't changed in seven years. And that's why I'm really excited about something that is a really good developer. I walk by the Independent, by the RISE on my way to work. I work in Mount Pleasant, a vibrant, kind of up-and-coming technology neighborhood. I walk by it every day, and I watch it go up, and it's exciting that this developer does want to build something across from a fantastic restaurant and one of the bars that convinced us to move to this neighborhood, bells and whistles. And it's just exciting to see more of that coming to the neighborhood. I'll just end on my thoughts as someone who works in technology, and one of my observations, we've talked a lot about the housing crisis in Vancouver and the low vacancy rates that we have, and I've experienced that personally. I think something else that's important to consider is a talent problem that we have and being able to retain people who will drive innovation for our community and for them to have somewhere to live. We went through a lot of statistics that it is unrealistic for people to be able to buy and still have this wonderful experience like I have of having a walking commute. It's a great way to start your day, and I want the next generation of people that I work with to be able to rent and have a home and have this fantastic experience. But we need to address the supply problem, and we heard as well what the plan for the mixed-use space will do for the small businesses in the area. I think that's really important as well, to drive innovation, support for local small businesses, and I am speaking in support of this development.
Great. Thanks very much for coming in again, and no questions for you, but appreciate you giving us your comments. Right, so that's it for the speakers list, and so I'm going to call three times. Does anybody else like to speak to this application on Fraser Street? Going twice. Anybody out there in the lobby? Nope. Got the head shake. No, that's it. So third time. So we'll close the speakers list now because we've received no comments after 5:00 PM today, and just wondering if the applicant has any closing comments? Nope. Thanks very much. Staff have any closing comments? Nope. And council. Councillor Frye, you've got some questions for staff.
No, actually, I wanted to move to the floor.
Okay. Councillor Kirby Young, do you have any questions for staff?
No.
Okay. Looks like he got beat out on that one, I think. So we'll move to recommendation. How about councillor Flye? You're going to move the recommendation?
I would move it to the floor.
Right. And councillor Kirby Young, you want a second? Okay, great. Thank you. So it's on the floor now. Any debates?
Yeah, I just, you know, it's my absolute pleasure to move this. I know people who've been watching my record on voting for market rental projects that have DCL waivers has not been very positive, but I think that this is really... They're paying for growth, and I'm so impressed with the... Other than the parking thing, which I understand now and totally appreciate, I'm really impressed with the approach that the developers taken with, I think what is a really innovative and positive approach in working with industry and looking at how to foster small, independent commercial retail units that are really responsive and integrating to a community that we know is very special and that, you know, in the lack of the comprehensive citywide plan, a lot of folks in that neighborhood worry about what the future of their neighborhood's going to look like because there's so much development happening so quickly. So I'm really happy to see this kind of approach. More projects like this looks great to me. Thank you. Happy to support.
Thank you. Councillor Kirby Young. I'm sorry, I didn't advantage you. There you go. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm also happy to support this project, and I don't want to be repetitive, so I just want to note two comments that really stood out for me, other than the obvious ones that we need... We have a low vacancy rate. We need more purpose-built rental. It's really considering the type of local-serving commercial that's going in. So all those being positives, there's two things that I kind of want to note that I'm taking away from this particular application. One is really reiterating the stat that came from staff about how important these projects are, and the fact that they said of our 10-year target of 20,000 units to date, a quarter of the way through that timeframe, we've only achieved 11%. 11. So that's less than half of where we want to be, and I think that's really important to be aware of as council receives applications like this. So I'm very happy to support it. The second point I wanted to note is that I also think it's a really compelling takeaway, and I appreciated the applicant being very honest in their answer, around the fact that an applicant would rather pay $2 million contribution in DCLs because of the uncertainty and the toughness of making the economics work in the longer term on the building by guaranteeing rents upfront, and that is usually for initial rents when they come in under specific rental support programs that we have. So I think that's, for me, that's a real takeaway from this application as council will consider future policies. But I know tonight we need to stick to this application, but I think that's something that's really noteworthy because that is different than we have seen on some of the other rental projects that have come forward under specific programs. So with that said, I will be supporting the application. Thank you.
Thanks. Councillor Dominado.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I'm equally supportive of the proposal, and obviously, notwithstanding that, and it's already been highlighted, is the importance of purpose-built rental in the city and accessibility. I think that what else stood out for me was the fact that there's almost 40% family-sized units in this proposed development, and I think that's incredibly important. We're hearing increasingly from families that they're looking for two-, three-bedroom units, and it's also more accessible than, for example, a single-family dwelling or townhome. And so, and we've talked about this before in council, about the need to have just a diversity of housing across the spectrum in the city. The other piece I was looking for was preservation of the commercial retail that's already there, and I see that integrated within the building, and I think that's great. I also like the activation of the lane. So in that regard, I'm supportive of the application.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Swanson.
The research that I've seen says that increasing the supply of expensive rentals increases the vacancy rate in expensive rentals. So... And what I've also seen in my experience is that when people in lower-rent apartments move out and into the higher-rent apartments, that simply means that the rents in the lower-rent apartments go up by hundreds of dollars a month because we don't have vacancy control. I've seen that over and over again with tenants calling me, and tenants call me a lot. The landlord lobby was pretty well represented here today, but there are other points of view, like the one I've just stated, and we have academic credentials behind that, too, and I think it's important for us to look at all points of view. And my feeling is that we shouldn't be giving increased density without getting an affordability benefit, so I'll be voting against the project.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Carr.
I'll be supporting the project, and I think, number one, I really appreciate the approach to the retail, to the commercial businesses. This is reiterating, I think, what my other colleagues on council have said, but I think it's really great to work very, sort of in consort with the kinds of businesses that really support community. I really appreciate that it's rental, and it's hard to accept DCL waivers when it's market rental. This is market rental, but it's not receiving DCL waivers, and so I appreciate that. And I appreciate the honesty in saying, what would it take to get to lower-price units? And, you know, issues around construction cost and/or government support, were the answers given? And I think those are pretty realistic answers, and it's something that we, as a city, are challenged around. I also just want to note that we didn't get one piece of correspondence nor one speaker against the project. So obviously, the public will was there to support this, so I will be.
Thanks very much. Councillor Weep.
Yeah, I'll be supportive of the project. However, there is one of the small businesses there that has obviously become an iconic component to the neighborhood, and on its front sign, it says 2010 to forever, and obviously, we know that forever is changing. And so for me, we really need to look at what we can do to support our small businesses in neighborhoods like this that do have transitional change. And so what can we do to find ways of funding some of that relocation? Because those are the type of businesses we need to keep because they're part of the fabric of the community. So we're losing a Good Breakfast Place and some other places that I'm sure have been there for a long time, and as we move forward, we need to recognize what is the community, what do we want to protect, and how can we ensure that when we do bring in new buildings like this, we can find ways to support those businesses?
Thanks very much. I don't see anybody else on the list, but I'd like to say, you know, thanks very much to the proponent for bringing this forward. Thanks to staff for really doing the best they can to move this through. I think we've... If I said we had a magic formula here, it's no tenant displacement and no DCL waiver seems to be something that is looked on with favor with council, but definitely displacement is that we're not shifting any tenants out of old buildings, older buildings out to replace them with new rentals. out to replace them with new rental. So I think this ticks, definitely ticks all the boxes for me, and I even put a little gold star beside it. So I'm very thankful for you coming forward, so I'll be supporting this. And I guess we move to the vote now. There we go. Okay, so that has passed with all in favor except for Councilor Swanson. So thank you very much for that and coming in this evening. I need a motion to adjourn. Councilor Carr, seconded by Councilor Frye, all in favor of adjournment? Hey, made it. Okay, thanks very much, and we won't see you tomorrow. Good luck tomorrow. I'm in Seattle.